Right ahead.
Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 et sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you will call the roll, please.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Chairman, uh, sorry, Dinsmore?
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson, and our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Excellent. All right. I stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have some resolutions here. Uh, Ms. Veely, I'm going to have to rely on who you've got here who's legally allowed to vote for this. Do we have the people here that can vote for it?
We have two of you.
Is that enough, Mr. Carlson? I don't...
Do we have two or four?
Two or four.
You don't answer that, right?
Well, you make a motion and I guess he can't second it.
Why can't the chairman second?
Technically, don't you, can you...
I've never seen anything that says we can. It's just more of a traditional thing than...
You really just need one person to approve its resolution. One of the people who did.
Sure.
Is that incorrect?
Let's go with that.
No, no, I want to do it right.
Oh, no. For a resolution, I think that was. But with a problem, Chase application.
What what?
Chase application with Mr. Ingraham.
Oh, that's where we have a problem. Then we just have to... Maybe Judy will show up at the next meeting, you know, the regular meeting.
There you have it. Okay.
All right.
Why don't we say all the resolutions for the next meeting?
As long as we do them.
That makes enormous sense. I agree with that. All right. So we are going right to the agenda tonight. Application number 20:518, Rakesh and Asha Malhotra, 521 Powder Mill Road, Block 27, Lot 1, Minor Subdivision.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Karan Malhotra on behalf of Rakesh Malhotra who's here. Am I right?
What is your name, sir?
Karan Malhotra.
Will you say all that, please? And the first name?
Karan. K-A-R-A-N. Oops.
Good to meet you.
Um, I believe there was just a topographical issue with this minor subdivision and as we're not planning on using this land for any building or applying for any variances thereof, we're just planning on either donating and/or selling off the land. We, I don't believe we need a variance at that point. Is that correct, Mr. Engineer?
Well, actually, um, did you attempt to read our letter? We had asked for our concern, in which I just wanted to bring it up to our Board's Council as well. My concern is about this board approving a subdivision or a lot that may not be developable, that it cannot be built on due to state environmental constraints. And, um, because a lot is heavily constrained with riparian, with floodplain and wetlands. And in my opinion, those limits should be known prior to this board making a decision if the lots feasibly can be built on.
But the lot otherwise conforms.
Yeah. Well, it conforms, however, it is just from a layperson look at it, if you back out some of these environmental constraints, it is, has steep slopes on it and it, you know, it may not conform from a municipal zoning standpoint with the slope regulations. But particularly, my concern is with the, that if you're, if there's a usable building envelope somewhere on this very large site, but if there is a usable building envelope outside of the environmental constraints would be, is really the root of my question.
Susan, do you know where the ordinance stands on that?
Um, well, I would have to defer to Andrew on the slopes, but in terms of the pure area, you know, air bulk, it would be a conforming lot.
But I guess the question that's being raised is, do slopes and other impediments contribute to...
To zoning compliance.
Zoning compliance. I don't know the answer to that.
In my experience, they don't come into play unless you're actually building something.
Yeah, as I say, it's more of a question that I don't know the answer to. My concern is, again, creating a lot that...
What's the purpose of the subdivision?
Well, so essentially, we've been paying taxes on both lots at this point and my client actually wants to not pay the taxes on it, possibly donate it to Parsippany eventually, but as of now, there's no plans on building anything on the lot. It's just a pure...
All right, so you've got an undevelopable piece of the property. You'd like to subdivide it off so it's no longer of tax consequence and then perhaps donate it as open space.
Bingo.
What if it's not donated?
Um, well, at that point, we would try to either sell it off, but I think the intention is to donate it.
It sounds like you would have trouble finding a developer for the property.
Agreed. I mean, I don't think we're doing it as a development site.
Have you had any conversations with the township about donating it?
Um, we have not. I think the first step was that we have to subdivide it before we can even have that conversation.
I mean, I don't see a legal hurdle to subdividing it, notwithstanding the fact we are creating a lot that's not going to be able to be developed. Um, if they're subdividing it in a conforming matter, that's within their rights.
Seems like it's a risk taken on by the applicant.
It's a risk taken on by the applicant. That's right. Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
That was all I had. That was my...
The only thing I had was a typo on the address on the subdivision plan. I think it says 251 in one place.
Yeah, it's 521, I'm sorry.
Right. So that could just be corrected as part of the final...
You got it.
Just one question, Mr. Carlson. So it's your opinion that going forward with this is perfectly within our rights as a minor site plan subcommittee?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted that out there. All right. Ms. Favate, you have a whole bunch of things you want to talk about.
Well, not really, Mr. Chairman, but I guess I should go through the waivers.
Yes.
Um, the only one that was required is they had, and they did provide this in advance, the permission inter property, 200-foot property owners. Actually, I don't think that's even required for minor. We should probably fix the checklist.
We should do a minor checklist.
Yeah. Um, we recommended a waiver on the DEP letter of interpretation. I think it's clear that there are wetlands, but not in the buildable area of the site. Um, I think we did ask for testimony on protective covenants, if there are any.
Are none.
Are none, okay. Um, we thought photographs might be helpful. I think that was when we were thinking, like Andrew was, that this might be something you were looking to build on.
Nope.
Uh, if it's just essentially maintaining the status quo, I don't know that those are particularly necessary.
Can't imagine why.
Um, description, I think you provided that. We recommended a waiver on the natural features. I think it's very clear what those are and you're not, again, trying to build on that area. Um, no regrading because you're not planning on building and then the same with drainage. So some, I think we are good on the waivers and checklist.
We don't need any waivers?
Well...
We do, but we'll need a vote.
As, sorry, as indicated in my...
All right. Do I have a motion to grant the waivers indicated in our planner's memo?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the waivers.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Veely.
All right. Can I just say, all in favor?
Yes, you may.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you've got your waivers.
I think we're looking for further questions or a motion.
I just have one more question, not a question, but a requirement if a condition of approval that the board approves would be to show the utilities of, we're always concerned with the subdivision, that the potential of existing utilities running through the subdivided lot and then there would be easements required and whatnot. So as we would require that you show the existing utilities that are serving the current house.
Sure, we can provide a letter from the utilities that...
As long as, the purpose is as long as they're not running through the portion of the lot to be subdivided off. Otherwise, you need to have...
We have a letter there that says that there's no utilities running through the lot to provide...
It sounds as though there'd be no intent to run utilities to the newly created lot.
Oh, absolutely not.
And the existing ones do not run through the subdivided block. Is that what you're saying?
Yep.
All right, well, that's the purpose of my question.
Yep.
Okay.
Some certification to that effect will be the condition of the approval.
I'll provide the certification that there's not going to be any utilities run to the new subdivision.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. That was all I had.
Do we have other members of the board or from our professionals that have questions? Ms. Veely, you're...
No, I'm good.
Mr. Mealy? Did Ms. Hernandez show up in time for her to be considered part of this?
She was here for the waivers. Um, how much of this did you hear?
I believe she heard all the testimony.
Okay, that's all. I wanted to make sure that she was...
Sorry.
That's all right. Do you have any questions? Anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
All right. Is there anybody on the board ready to make a motion? Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve Malhotra Minor Subdivision Block 27, Lot 1, R3 Zone District, 521 Powder Mill Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Veely.
Uh, if you will call the roll, please.
Ms. Hernandez?
Um, yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Karan.
Thank you. I'd like to thank our professionals for walking us through that and making sure we did it right.
Think we got it.
Go through the resolutions now.
Thank you.
Uh, we have Jennifer, uh, Jennifer.
How you been? Everything's good? Where? Oh, okay. We were on recess, so I think we're on...
We're about to, we suggested that we go back and do the resolutions now. Judy's here.
Excellent. Oh, good, okay. Good seeing you, Karan. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, we had a bunch of resolutions that we didn't do because at least one of them only...
Because Judy decided to be late.
One person, so we couldn't even second them. Uh, so of these resolutions here...
Do you want to vote them one at a time, Chairman, or do you want to take them, take the two as a block and then the other?
That makes sense. Do I hear a motion in, for the resolutions for 20:506 Indian Stream and 20:509 CSC TKR to approve the resolutions?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the following resolutions. Application 20:506 Indian Stream 108-120, Loop 46, Block 693, Lot 24, and Application 20:509 Minor Site Plan and Subdivision CSC TKR LLC, 6 Eastman's Road, Block 738, Lot 3, Minor Site Plan.
Hike.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Ms. Hernandez, thank you. Uh, if you call the roll, please.
Ms. Hernandez?
Um, yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore?
Yes. All right, and finally, on application 513, I was recused.
So I think we're looking for a motion to approve the resolution on application 20: 513 Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee JP Morgan Chase 53 North Beverlywood Road, Block 607, Lot 1.
Okay, I'll make that motion if we read it all.
So moved will work. Motion by Ms. Hernandez.
If you call the roll, please.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Very good. Thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So ordered.
Can we go home now?
Not quite. Not quite. You can go home for 10 minutes.
Good plan on Monday night football.
And that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:6-4 et sec. Did I get that right?
No.
Oh. What did I say?
10:6 dot dash four?
10:4...
4 dash 6.
Thank you, sir. Of the New Jersey Public Open Meetings Act. Nora, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Di Piero. Is that a yep?
I hear you.
Share that microphone.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Mr. Fergieri?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mandell?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Ms. Veely?
Here.
Chairman Von Aiken?
Here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Favate. Here. Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson, and our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Everybody, please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of the board should have received the calendar for 2021, assuming everything works out as planned, which I think we'll just take as a hopeful given for now. Can I get a motion to accept the calendar for 2021?
So moved. Second, Dinsmore.
Okay. Uh, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Di Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken?
Yes. Okay, moving on. First, if there's any members of the public who would like to speak about issues not on the agenda, please come forward. Something that's not on the agenda, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, I believe.
Hi, my name is Rosa Mayoni and I live in 17 Stafford Terrace, in Persipony. Oh, sure. Uh, my name is Rosa Mayoni and I live in 17 Stafford Terrace, Persipony. Um, and this is my friend from school and I, we actually have a question about the, what's currently being done about the water quality, since I live in Persipony and I have small childrens. Um, we wanted to know, um, what are the steps that are being done for that?
Everyone's looking at me. Scott? Yep. I'm not the water quality guy, I'm the lawyer.
Sure.
This is what I want to tell you is that... Sure, sure. Please, Councilman.
Okay. Are you referring to the letter that was sent out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was more a paper problem with the DEP than it was a water quality problem in the township. We have no water quality problem in the township. Um, we do have three wells that are being replaced, but that's not because of water qualities because they've been here a very long time and, um, they, the calcium deposits inside the pipe have made them tough to pump. So they're drilling three new wells to keep our supply up, but there is no water problem.
I did see in the letter that they were going to do a new sample of the water and it would, maybe another letter following up about the sampling or the test?
The wording in that letter was mandated by the DEP, not by the township. It made it look like we, our water is poisoned and everybody should boil their water. It wasn't the case. It was the way the DEP required that letter to be written, but it was a paper issue, some report that didn't get reported on time. The pandemic has manpower shortages in our departments too, and we do not have a water quality problem in Persipony.
Can I ask you, is this for a school project or is this a curiosity on your own part?
It is a school project and since I live in Persipony, I did pick the water quality because, um, I'm, you know, I like...
Sure, sure, as am I. Um, I was going to ask, it would be helpful with your school project if you were to talk with the head of our water utility who could really answer these questions in depth for you.
Okay.
If you'd like, um, you know, we'd be glad to set that meeting up for you. The planning board here deals with land development applications and not utility issues.
Okay.
But if you'd like to speak with the relevant people at the mayor's office and with utilities, we'd be glad to set that up for you, if that's helpful to you for your project.
Sure, sure. All right.
Yeah. We're very fortunate, we've got Council President Di Piero here who is able to give you some of the answers you're asking for.
Exactly.
Okay.
But if you have a series of questions and you want to talk to the department head, I'm sure that could be arranged if that's helpful for school.
Sure. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay. All right. Any other members of the public with anything to present? Seeing nobody moving forward, we'll move on with the first item on our agenda, which is application number 19:516 Pond Partners, Upper Pond Road, Block 136, Lots 43.07, Minor Site Plan with C variance. Sir, please state your name and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me okay? I'm a little muffled, I guess.
I can, but I'm afraid you're probably not getting into the mic very well.
Maybe you could lift the mic since...
It says don't touch, though. I follow the rules.
I'll clean it later, go ahead.
You have special leave to touch the microphone and lift it if that...
Okay. Is that better? Can you, yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Uh, my name is Scott Lippert. I'm a member of the firm of Passmann Stein Walder Hayden and I represent the applicant tonight, Pond Partners LLC. Um, this is, I think, a very simple application. The owner of this office building wanted to provide an amenity for the tenants to allow them to eat lunch outdoors. And that's all it is. Uh, and it turns out it does require a variance because of the height of the wall that we're going to install and that's, I guess, really the only nuance here. Um, and I think that's all the background you need and with that, I'm going to introduce my witness tonight. Yes, sir.
First, we'd just like to go through the waivers with our planner.
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Sure, as the attorney noted, this does require a variance. Initially, that wasn't clear and so subsequently, they satisfied the checklist requirements for the variances, so it's in two memos where the checklist requirements are. Um, they did provide the permission inter property subsequent to the original submission. Um, in terms of waivers, because this is no, you know, no new building, it's not changing the existing building and it is occurring in a previously developed portion of the property, we recommended waivers relating to natural features, topographic contours, spot elevations, floor plans, utilities, storm drainage, lighting, soil erosion, there is no street dedication, there's no change to the use of buildings, um, no need for a traffic study or environmental assessment report. And then in terms of the variance requirements, they are similar because it's only occurring in a small area, there's no need for the tract boundaries and dimensions, again, floor plans and utilities. We did ask for testimony on signage and just the overall project itself.
Do you have any questions about the waivers? Motion to accept the waivers.
So moved, Dinsmore.
All right. All right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No opposed.
And sir, while we're at preliminaries, can you spell your name for the record, please?
L-I-P-P-E-R-T.
Thank you.
Yeah. And just, so just one other observation before we start with the testimony. This has been in the works for a while now. It's taken longer than we anticipated and it turns out that, um, you know, this all started before the whole pandemic and it turns out, I think it's, keep in mind, I think it's even a better idea to have an outdoor space to allow people to eat lunch and that's all we're doing here. So I'd like to introduce my first witness, first and only witness, who is Deb Serbone, our landscape architect. And I guess we can get her sworn, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I normally don't need a microphone, so I can, we can keep it high. Can you hear me without the microphone?
I hear you fine, but we do need it for the record and the other members to decide.
Can everybody hear me? Scott's going to...
We really need it for recording purposes.
Okay, because we're going to tag team and...
Because off of this recording, we will do the resolution, so it's helpful if you're heard in the...
Okay. So I'll do this and Scott...
If you're off mic and she's on, that'll be fine.
Doug.
All right.
Okay, so...
Would you, uh, hold on. Would you raise your right hand, please?
Yes, sorry.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure. Deborah Serbone, it's D-E-B-O-R-A-H. Serbone is S-E-R-B-O-N-E.
And counsel, she's testifying as?
A landscape architect.
All right. Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Sure. I'm a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey and New York, licensed professional planner in New Jersey. Um, I have a degree in plant science from Rutgers University and a degree in landscape architecture from Rutgers University. Um, do you want, I've testified in front of many boards in New Jersey before, including Parsipony, because this really looks familiar and I'm trying to figure out how long ago it was, but I know it was with Doug Henchall.
That, that should suffice.
Yeah.
Chairman, her qualifications are submitted.
All right.
For your approval.
Uh, any other questions for, about qualifications? Nope. All right. Please proceed.
Well, I don't have the easel.
Yeah, I'm happy to hold up the plan, so let's start with the...
And I have handouts, too. Um, what I have in the handouts, usually I just go hand these out, but however you want to handle it. Um, here, you have my notes there, too. There you go. So on the handouts, I have exactly the boards that I'm going to present, just reduced down 11 by 17. And then also, we prepared a section to show the relationship of that screen that we're asking for the variance for. And, um, and then I have photographs. So that's probably one of the first things you wanna look at. It says eight photographs of the site on the back there. That he'll, uh, refer to when we make a test.
So, we'll need to identify this as an exhibit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, are you gonna use the photographs first, Deb?
Um.
Or you wanna use the place?
Yeah, well, let, let me just show you what the site plans are, because you guys are probably going to look at them. What I have in front of me tonight, in the first three pages, we've got, we print on both sides, the safe paper. So I've got, uh, sheet one of three, which is just the cover sheet, shows the entire site development. This black square there is our, uh, little patio that we're proposing. Uh, sheet two of three is the site plan. There's two plans, uh, just the general, uh, site plan, uh, of this, the hardscape, and then, uh, the plan of the planting plan underneath of that. And then the sheet three of three is the details, which includes some elevations of the screen and elevations of the retaining wall.
Hey ma'am, we'll, we'll mark this A1. Was it, what, did we give it a designation?
We did not.
Yeah, we'll mark this as A1.
A1 consisting of three sheets.
Thank you.
Okay.
Or six, depending on who's copy you're looking at.
So, I think we're gonna, I already explained really the important stuff that's on there. The building's ours all on, on sheet one. Uh, we, um, have an overall addition of coverage of seven hundred and sixty-nine square feet, which is point twenty-seven percent additional profit.
Of course, we're talking, but then, why don't you take a minute and describe, uh, you know, what, what's there now?
So the existing, uh, conditions of, can, can you just hold that, and I'll get, okay. So the existing conditions of the office building. If you can look at, um, your last sheet here, and, uh, I have eight site photos. So, um, so you'll see that there's a, um, uh, there's a loading dock there. And the loading dock has two or three bays, I think two bays it fits. And to the right of that loading dock is the, uh, the area that we want to put the patio. So right now, there's three crab apples that are in poor health, and some, uh, ground cover eonamis, and a lawn, and two, um, uh, picnic tables there. And there's a retaining wall that holds up the upper parking area, um, to the right of the building. And then another retaining wall that holds up the, uh, area where we'll be putting the patio, that keeps it elevated above the, um, above the loading dock. To the left of that are another three crab apples. We're not touching those. Um, there's also a transformer that we will, has no screen around, and we're gonna be adding some screen around that. That's on the island, on this island here. There's an existing transformer with nothing around it. Three, uh, crab apples, there's three crab apples in here, two Doug Furs that are in poor health. And, um, there's also an existing drainage problem. So if you look at those photographs, you can see that there's, um, the sidewalk, this existing sidewalk here dips down in the middle, and then back up again towards the end of the curb here, and it's causing erosion. So, uh, so what, um, so we fixed that in our design. There's also a pipe that daylights out above the upper wall that is causing erosion, and we're picking up that drainage and fixing that in our design also. So, um, and you can see all of that in the pictures. Does anybody have any questions about the existing right now? Okay. Shall I go into the proposal?
Absolutely.
Alright. So what we're proposing is very simply is a, we're taking this same orientation of the existing sidewalk. We're not changing the orientation, location of it. We're just going to be, um, making a, we took, taking a straight line from this end of the wall here to the edge of the curb here, and rebuilding of, of the wall higher so that it no longer dips down in the middle. So our sidewalk now just has a continuous pitch out to the, out to the existing parking lot. Um, to the, uh, north of that, we're proposing a patio that is thirty feet, thirty foot two inches by thirty foot approximately, it's approximately thirty by thirty. Um, and this will be made out of porcelain pavers that look like limestone. And, uh, on that patio, we have four, um, stationary tables that are anchored to the patio. And, uh, they have six chairs each that are anchored to the table. And, uh, with the exception of the one closest to the door, has five, uh, attached seats and one that's vacant for a handicap, uh, for a, a wheelchair to pull up and use that spot. We have two benches, one, uh, here, that, this is the existing retaining wall that is staying the same, so we have one here. So you can sit on the edge and look out over here. And then we have a panel, this, this light colored half circle there is a panel of lawn. And, uh, and then between the lawn, we have, I'm hopping over to the landscape plan, but I'll get into that a little bit more detail. But, so all of the dark green are the planting beds. The light green is the lawn, the gray is the patio. We'll have some planters there. We have, uh, two trash receptacles, one for recycling, one for standard trash. Uh, we have four planters on the corner of the patio. And, uh, and then I can also talk to you about the drainage and the plantings. Which one you wanna hear first? How about the drainage? Let's do the drainage. Okay, so the drainage, as I said, there's an existing pipe that daylights out this, this wall here, causes erosion. See if that shows up in, see if that shows up in the photo. Not really, but you can kind of see it in, uh, these two lower pictures where this, it's right around where that tree is, but that's in the loading dock.
You know, we're referring to photos now.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Alright, so, is that photo, is that photo set we'll, we'll consider exhibit A2?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It's all part of the same exhibit. So it is the.
Oh, one of the sheets on here.
It is.
Oh, the second sheet?
Yeah.
Strike that, then.
So it is, um, the last photo on the first sheet, the last right-hand corner photo of the first sheet of photos, um, where the, 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 um, traffic little wall ends, that's where that, that pipe daylighted. So what we're gonna do is we're actually gonna pick up that pipe, put it into the ground. We're going to put a new drain inlet here at the end of this wall. So we're gonna pick up some of this drainage that's coming this way, that's naturally already going there. Gonna pick that up in a pipe. We're gonna pipe that, what's daylighting now, put that in a pipe. 'Cause right now, that just daylights, and it goes like this, right over the property, the sheet flows over, goes to that low point where the sidewalk goes like that, and dips down, and just, uh, erodes and causes erosion right over the, um, the ramp of the loading dock. So ultimately, our water's ending up right on the ramp of the loading dock, but we're controlling it. So we're picking it up here, piping it to this catch basin. All of this drain is a sheet flowing across the new patio, gets caught in, uh, picked up in a trench drain across here, and then there's a hard pipe that goes into another catch basin, now that whole grade is higher 'cause we've, uh, we've increased the height of the wall there. And, uh, it goes into the catch basin there, that basin goes down, it has two pipes going into it, perforated pipe and a hard pipe. And then that is let out under, at the bottom of that wall, right at grade, and it just trickles down here into a trench drain that is across the bottom of the, the lowest grade of the loading dock there. So, again, all the water is going exactly where it does today. It's just controlled, and there will be no more erosion. Um, as far as the planting design, we tried to create a, a nice, um, little kind of contained haven to, um, so that, uh, so you don't feel like you're sitting in the parking lot or sitting in the loading dock either. Uh, so we have, uh, here, these three larger circles, um, on, on that arc are native birch trees, those river birches. So they're multi-stemmed, and they'll get about thirty feet or more tall. They get taller than most people thought they were ever going to. Um, so we have up like two, two. Um, and, uh, and then we have, uh, some shrubbery on top of the wall with ground cover. And we've got, there's, there's existing, I forgot to mention, there's existing eonamis ground cover along this existing slope, so we're keeping that for the most part. Also, I forgot to mention, as part of the hardscaping is that there is a little eroded, we call them cow paths, where people just walk across the plantings. So being that's what people are doing now, we thought we'd give them a place to walk, and not through the shrubs and so, and not cause erosion. So we have a series of stepping stones and slab stone stairs going from this lower level to this upper level lawn. And this, this hard line here at the top of the drawing to the far right of the drawing, that's the parking spaces on that upper lot. And these are the parking spaces on the lower lot. So again, it's just to, just kind of fix an erosion problem. Um, back to the plantings, so we have, um, or surrounding the patio, there's a combination of, um, of, uh, a lot of different foliage plants, all, all very, um, low maintenance, um, different, uh, flowers and, um, oh, here, hold on. Um, it is supposed to have, this is supposed to be like one copy for each of you, but it's not. So if you wanna pass it around, you can, but I have pictures here of all the plants that are proposed. So there's a lot of different flower ties. Because you're sitting right there looking at it, um, I've worked with the owner of the building for a long time. I designed his house, and he knows, you know, we kind of work together. He wants it like a garden. So that's what we have here. And so there's different textures and bold foliage and thin foliage and flowers throughout the season. So a lot of different stuff going on. That's all, uh, easy to maintain. I know he'll take good care of it. And a lot of scented plants and, um, anyway, all those pictures are here. If anybody has any specific questions about them, I don't think I need to get into what each of the plants is. But it's gonna look beautiful, I guarantee that. Around the, uh, generator here, uh, transformer, I think it is, I'm sorry, is a, uh, just a hedge of, of precipia. Um, we have, and then we have the screen that is requiring a variance. So the screen is, I'm going to, the screen goes from the corner, uh, it's on top of the new retaining wall that we're, the, the existing retaining wall right now goes like this. And the, uh, the rest of the grade goes like this. So we are connecting them, making it higher. I'll show you that. You have it on your drawings on sheet three. You can see like in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see the shading to show, um, let me find that for you. So the sheet that you have here, this is the screen at the top. I'm gonna flip over to the first one and show you. So the top here is colored, just has some color on it, but it's on your drawings on the top there. The screen is made out of, um, it's aluminum, it's recycled. It's, uh, a good portion of the recycled materials. So they're like stencil cutouts, so the wind goes through it, the light goes through it. It is not inexpensive. There is just a small planting bed, so we can't really plant, you know, we want to, um, we want to be able to have our diners feel like they're not sitting in the middle of the loading dock. And, um, with the truffus and all that, so.
So that's, that's why you need the screen, right?
Yes.
It's visuals.
Yes, it's a vis, it's a visual screen. Yeah, out of sight, out of mind.
And can, can anybody see it from anywhere in the neighboring property?
No. No, you would not be able to. Underneath of that is a section of showing people standing at the top, and then people standing, not that they would be standing at the loading dock, but people stand at the loading dock and the dimensions of it. So the wall at the highest point is, is four foot two inches. The, um, the, the top of the screen at the highest is five foot six inches. So that is a, um, a total of nine foot eight inches. So it's almost ten feet. Um, but the, um, and this, it's, what you're allowed maximum six-foot combination wall and fence. So you'll see, if we had a little two-foot fence on top of that, it wouldn't get you much. I'm going to, oh, I'm sorry. So before I flip over to the section, down here, you can see, this is the existing wall, down, these two sections down at the bottom, is the expansion of concrete wall. Um, as you can see, the one poche is the existing wall, and then we're in, taking it, bringing it all the way to the end, so it's going to continuous pitch. This is a, uh, kind of a blow-up of the screen, and we're gonna flip this over, and. And there we go. So this is taken from a photo. If you look at your last sheet there with the photographs, um, hold on. I think it's one of the ones on the last sheet.
Is this included in the three sheets?
It is. You have it, yep, we have it. And, um, but if you look on the last sheet, this is essentially what you're seeing, is the lower left photograph that the section that we have drawn up essentially shows that. This continues on, this is the corner of the building, this is air, that's more building, and with a parking garage underneath. We're showing a ten-foot box truck, we're showing a fourteen-foot semi-truck. These are all to scale. And here we've got that, uh, wall, so in.
This is just the height of the wall, right?
Yeah, the height of the wall and the relationship to everything else around it. So you're dining here, you're standing here. Uh, it just about covers the box truck, and you'll still see a semi. But, um, but you won't, if you, um, right now, there is a railing. So railing's thirty-six inches on top of the wall, so that already, the four foot two inches and thirty is seven foot two inches, so that already exceeds the six. We feel that this is, um, we could do the same screening with plantings, but the plantings, we've got such a narrow spot to do it, 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 they would overcrowd the, uh, sidewalk in such a short amount of time. This is way more expensive than plantings would be, these, um, aluminum panels. So, um, but we think there's that, they're gonna be really great. We have grasses planted at the bottom of them, which shows up in more in your sections also. So, um, uh, yeah, there's supposed to be a six-foot dimension on there, but there's not. But use your imagination. It's just the two feet above that, the top of the wall is what you're allowed. So we feel that, um, that, uh, doing a, the screen instead of, um, plantings is going to be, um, a lot, it's just gonna function, it's gonna function a lot better than the plantings. So, um, and we feel that the, um, because it's not, doesn't have any reverse, uh, visual, um, effects on any of the neighboring properties. And, um, you know, the, the guys that are at the loading docks also, I don't think they wanna see people and feel like they're imposing on people, um, sitting and having their lunch either. So it gets both, I see.
How, how will the judge, the, the, the.
Yeah, so there is, we can go back to. So, yeah, we can flip that around. Uh, I mean, essentially, people are gonna be coming to this area from inside the building. They're gonna be inside working, and they're going to come out and have lunch here. Uh, so, uh, if they, this is an, uh, an exit. It's more or less an exit to the building. I guess if you, um, if you're, if you're not, if you're a tenant there, then, um, you have a key to, to get in. Uh, and, uh, but if you're a guest, you have to go around to the front of the building, I believe. Um, but there's some parking spaces here, parking spaces here, but essentially, uh, there is a drop curb at the sidewalk, which you can see in the photographs. We're not changing the curb at all, we're just keeping what's existing. So a wheelchair, uh, and, or, you know, handicap can hop up the curb and, uh, you know, the little lift, there's like less than an inch lift, I think, and, uh, and go in the, the doorway that way. Does that answer it? Does that, everybody satisfied with that? I think that was one of the questions, um, on one of the reports.
Does that conclude your testimony, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask questions.
Alright. Uh, Ms. Favate, do you have any questions?
Um, just a couple. Is there any signage expected?
No, no, there's no new signage, and, uh, therefore we didn't, we haven't changed any existing signage.
Okay.
So again, this is just for the tenants in the building to be able to hop outside and eat lunch.
Okay.
Get some fresh air.
And, um, storage, you, you'll have somewhere to put, just put this away during the winter, I guess, or?
Uh, no, they, the.
They, they remain stationary?
They are, um, they're, um. Yeah, they're fixed to the ground. They're Victor Stanley, so they're kind of a, uh, enamel coated. They're, uh, farce green color. They'll, you know, they're very attractive. And, uh, the only thing is, uh, if there were umbrellas, those would be stored for the winter.
Okay. And, um, and thank you for the section. It's actually very, very helpful to understand context.
Thank you.
And I'm wondering, it's, you know, putting it out there for the board, but, um, can you go even actually higher with the screen? Because just looking at it, um, you know, a person could still sort of look over it. Even a person of average height, if they're standing on the patio, they can still sort of see the truck.
Yeah.
Right next to it.
Yeah, it's, um, the, I'd have to check.
If it comes in a larger panel?
Yes, how large the panels go. Um, and, I mean, I, I think you can probably get custom panels. I mean, I know you can get custom panels, but we, we picked a standard panel, and that in itself is, is not inexpensive.
Right.
So we could probably do, uh, do anything. Another option is if, if we were allowed to go higher, is that we could actually, um, bring it, lift it off the ground a little bit more and, and do, 'cause we have the landscape there. So it would give us more height, and then we'd have the plantings at the bottom to kind of fill the gap below.
Right. Well, I mean, I put it out there for the board because it, that is what requires the variance, so.
Yes.
Whether, whether they feel comfortable with going higher, but it just seems that, looking at the picture.
I had the same thought, that if you're requesting the variance, why not complete the job?
Right.
Uh, it's obviously your application, if you'd like, and, and if the board is so inclined, and I don't know that they are. Um, but if they are, it's prob, we could consider whether or not to put something in the application saying, should the applicant want to go up to X number of feet?
Yes.
That would be committed.
Well, if the board would give us that option, I don't see how that could be there.
Yeah, 'cause we would have to look at what, um, you know, what the standard panels, and, and again, we could do a detail of whether we're actually creasing the panels themselves, or we're creating a detail that maybe we do more of a border on the top and a border on the bottom, and then kind of extend that, the height of the same panel, but kind of extend the height of the, the screen itself.
Chairman, I think councilman has a question.
Well, a comment and a question. If anybody in the patio, the patio does not want to see the trucks. If anybody in the patio does not want to see the trucks, they don't have to look. So I guess the option is up to them.
Right.
Whatever appeals to them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that if the board is, would give us some leeway in going, you know, a foot or two higher, whatever you're comfortable with, then we can look at it and submit as a condition of, you know, if you all agree on what that maximum increase will be, then we'll submit a detail to you.
Yeah, I think as long as they're giving the applicant the option, they may decide it's not profitable. But if it is, they would do it.
You haven't requested it, but I'll take this as your request for that relief. And what would that relief be for? Another two feet of height?
I don't think we need more than the two foot, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
All right, I have a question now, if I may. Any additional lighting required back there?
Uh, yes, I didn't talk about the lighting, so.
You did.
Did?
You know, it's very little, the lighting is very minimal, it's all like no voltage lighting. So it's, we have two uplights in each of the birch trees. And then we have, on the panels, we have four, we call them wall washes. So we have a wall wash on the panels that's just at the bottom, it's kind of a fan. It gives a little bit of a glow up from the bottom. And the same thing on this wall here, just to give it a little bit of a glow and then kind of silhouettes the plants that are in front of it. That's it. There's no big fixtures. That's, that's where, you know, it's for lunch, really.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, it's, it's just, people will use this as an exit, so it's just to give them a little bit of glow when they leave the building at night since they're walking through a landscape space. So it's, but you know, it's for lunches.
No awning anticipated?
No.
Or umbrellas?
No.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, we might have umbrellas. I think we got the tables that have the umbrella options to hold. Yeah, so, you know.
Before continuing with the board questions, I think I'd like to turn the mist to Kanjiano about engineering questions.
Sure.
I only have one, I mean, it's a nice application, but on the dry-laced sidewalk that goes out to the parking lot, it doesn't appear to have any ADA handicapped parking out in that vicinity. Is there any? And if so, that should be accessible. You had mentioned an inch and a half, like at the pressed curb.
Uh, yeah, there isn't, we weren't doing anything to the curb. And quite frankly, I don't know if that is striped for, I'm going to look at the photos. I don't think it is.
It doesn't appear to be.
I think all of the handicapped accessible parking is at the front entry.
Okay.
Because that's where the elevator is. I'm not even sure, I mean, I'm sure you can get to the elevator from here, but that takes you to the main lobby.
Okay, so if there's no handicap parking there and it's not accessible, then there's no way to leave it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Ms. Favate, you got all your questions?
I did, thank you.
Is any member of the board, Mr. Mandell?
Yeah, my question is for Andrew, actually. Yeah, if they go another two feet, do you see any need for additional engineering review on your part? Two feet of what?
The screen height.
No, but all, any retaining wall over, four foot or over needs to be reviewed by the building department.
We're not, I don't think we're talking about an increase in the height of the retaining wall.
No, we would follow all of the manufacturer's specifications for our posts and the cross bracing.
Right. It's only the metal panel screens, whether or not.
It's a paracola. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Frigieri?
Yes. Yes, hi, a question for you, I think it's a great idea. Is there any consideration to have heaters to extend the use of this nice facility? And if so, what do you do with the heaters at the end of the day?
Uh, that's a good question, but I, I think if, if the owner were to, the heaters are a great idea. Especially, you know, because of the pandemic, so. And they could, I'm sure, being wheeled in, because all the heaters usually have wheels and, you know, the propane heaters, and they could probably wheel them right into, they do have a full-time maintenance fellow on the property, so he can wheel them in either into the adjacent room that's there or probably something associated with the loading dock has some storage there, whatever. So, yeah, but they would definitely not leave them out at night.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good idea.
Glad I could help.
Yeah. If we were to do the heaters, we would certainly require you want them.
Well, there's wind considerations, I don't know all the rules, but obviously, it's a whole other endeavor. And I might have missed this, but could you explain how the drainage goes? It goes beneath the retaining wall and then out?
Uh, yeah, it just, it goes, it cuts through the retaining wall, so it just daylights like the weak hole wood at the bottom of the retaining wall. So, and then it, it, everything pitches to the bottom, the bottom of the wall. So that would just continue down and into, into the.
Trench drain.
There's a trench drain at the bottom.
Okay.
There's a trench drain that goes halfway up.
I saw there was this, the sketch of it.
So I first, let me see if we come in. Yeah, I'm not sure where, I forget now where we come in relation to.
Mr. Kanjiano, did that seem like, did that jump out at you?
I saw that, I'm not really concerned about it because it's following the existing drainage path. The water comes over the top of the curb, hits the concrete truck apron, which is a heavy-duty apron, I don't have any issues with erosion. If it wasn't such a heavy-duty apron, I'd ask them maybe to make a pipe it right to the trench drain. But it's probably a major undertaking to start to dig up that, that heavy-duty concrete truck apron. So it's, it's a natural drainage path right now. They're just piping it to that wall and it'll daylight from the wall. I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members at this time? I just had two questions, one related to Mr. Frigieri's question about the drainage. Is there any way to fan some of that out, maybe to the planting beds that you have in order to keep the water returning back to, to the water table rather than going through the drainage system?
Uh, well, actually, some of it is, we, we are, there's the, it would go to the lawn. But we have a perforated pipe drain that comes, we have two pipes. One is perforated, one is solid. So we've got a solid pipe that's picking up this drainage from here, where we're correcting this drainage at the top of this wall into this catch basin. And then that's got a hard pipe that goes through this catch basin. But then this sheet flow here is picked up in a perforated pipe drain. So some of that may just percolate into the soil instead of actually being, you know, before it reaches the, the rest of the drainage system. So it all depends on how heavy it's raining.
Yeah, and it certainly could be with the amount of drainage you're getting from that pipe currently and creating all of that erosion.
Yes.
It might be just too much to handle naturally. All right. The other question is the safety of the panels. Are those rated to handle like a fence or are they just decorative?
Yeah, yeah, there's, they're, they use them a lot in urban spaces. They use them a lot as paddles on rooftops. So they're, they're very secure.
Okay.
So, and because of the cutouts, they, that, you know, gives them wind relief, that they're not like a big stale. And so, yeah, they're, they're all structurally engineered. And they do, they're available, quite large. So I just don't know the exact specs, what, you know, what the model is for.
Okay.
But we'll follow all the manufacturer specs for the bracing and all.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I like it. I like where you put, you're using river birds, you said, right?
Yes.
And, you know, that is like, like sweat.
Yes.
I like the way you designed that.
Thank you, thank you.
Sounds like it'd be beautiful.
Thank you. It will, yeah, hopefully I get invited.
Okay, do we have any comments from the public? All right, well, at this time, I'll entertain a motion on this application.
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I'm hearing the board correctly, we're looking for a motion to approve with a condition, if you will, that at their discretion, they can locate the screen up to two feet higher than proposed.
Is two feet acceptable by the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay.
Excuse me, with no change to the height of the retaining wall?
Correct, correct.
So seven, seven foot six inches.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Seven foot six inches for the screening wall?
For the screening only.
Okay.
The retaining wall is four feet two inches.
Mr. Chairman, an application number 19, colon 516 Pond Partners, six Upper Pond Road, block 136, lots 43.07. I move that we grant minor site plan with C variance with a condition that the screening fence be allowed to move to go up to seven foot six inches.
Do we have a second?
Second, Hernandez.
Ms. Hernandez, all right. Nora, we're ready for a roll call.
Councilman D. Pierre.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigieri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mandell.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Chairman Vannick.
Yes. Congratulations.
You know, I don't frequently come before boards and hear the words, "I like it." And can we give you more relief than you are?
That's a first for this board, as far as I know.
It's a good night.
Do you want to use variance while you're here, Miami?
Okay. All right, and we have another applicant, Alpha Investments, is that so? Okay. Is the board okay to keep going or do you need a recess? All right.
Please, keep going.
Let's bring them on.
Rock and roll.
Thank you.
Nora, do you need those? You can get their marks, if you can take them off the board.
Okay.
I believe the packet was marked A1. I don't think we marked an A2. I think this packet. Okay, but they also had a colorized version of the.
Sorry? Fire prevention, fire prevention and zoning and construction, depending on.
I think we have best to keep it.
They would have to submit, just like the outdoor dining now, nobody submitted for heaters yet. So when they do. But fire prevention will tell them where, where they can store it, how close to the building, all that.
Yeah, I think that would be for the.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Can't be stored inside.
Next on the agenda is application number 20, colon 505, Alpha Investments LLC and Vega Assets Investment LLC, 218 Halsey Road and Summit Roads, block 323, lots 1 and 16. All right, and this is a minor subdivision with C variance. Sir?
If you could use the microphone back there?
Microphone back there, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Larry Calley, on behalf of the applicants, Alpha Investments LLC and Vega Assets Investments LLC.
Would you just spell your last name for the record, please?
Calley, C-A-L-L-I.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we'll take up all that much of your time tonight on direct. We'll have three witnesses shortly who are going to testify. Relatively simple application we have before you. We've got two lots that exist today, lots 1 and 16, we'll refer to them by number to keep it simpler. Lot 16 is undeveloped and undersized. Lot 1 is oversized and developed on an oddly shaped corner lot at 218 Halsey Street. We're in the R4 zoning district. In total, the lots are oversized for the zone. Dwelling unit per acreage is accomplished here with two single-family residential structures as it is proposed. The oddity is that lot 16 being undersized has obvious difficulties with accommodating bulk standards like coverage, for instance. The proposal here before you tonight is to take some of that excess lot area from lot 1, the corner lot, the developed lot, provide it to lot 16 by way of a lot line adjustment. That in itself is tantamount to a minor subdivision. And along with it comes some minor bulk deviations. So what you'll hear from tonight is our site engineer, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Our engineer will take you through the lots as they exist today. He'll take you through the proposal and you'll see how it's better as proposed than existing. The other thing that we think is important with a minor subdivision case, and candidly, I always think is important is, while we put in something here that doesn't fit, I think you've got to ask yourself, what are the deviations and where? As proposed, lot 16 gets better than it is today. The deviations are not just nominal when you look at them in the vacuum of lots 1 and 16. When you look at them as a correspondence to the entire neighborhood, they're pretty consistent with what you see all around us, as far as building coverages go around us, as far as structure massing goes around us. So they're not out of character. We're not building an anomaly here, we're building a prototypical product on a lot that needs a house on there for improved housing stock in the township, a lot that's vacant today. And I will add that the developers here are longtime Parsippany residents. These are not fly-by-night developers who are coming in, trying to find a value-add project buried in the midst of the woods somewhere. These are folks that have been in town for decades and have done dozens of development improvement projects in the township. They do it with pride, they keep their properties, and they do it regularly. So this is an opportunity for them and the township to develop this infill lot that otherwise has difficulty on its own were it not for this lot line adjustment that's being proposed. You'll then hear from our architect, Mr. Chairman, after our engineer takes you through the site and the area. Our architect's going to show you the nice elevations proposed, how they're in keeping with other structures around us, relatively consistent with the appearance and type that you expect to see in the neighborhood. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, you know, notwithstanding the fact that I proffered to the board that the relief here is pretty nominal, we do have relief, we do have variances. Our planner will testify as to the deviations and the support for that. So a 1-2-3 this evening, Mr. Chairman, we do hope to be brief. We'll certainly go through all your questions you might have at the conclusion of it. But with that, we'd like to call our first witness.
Before we go forward with that, we'd like to cover the variances.
Sure.
Waivers.
Waivers, right.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe they provided the permission to enter property. We did recommend waivers on the New Jersey DEP letters. There are no wetlands on the property. Location of natural features, as was just testified or indicated. It's previously developed, there are no significant natural features here, and those are the waivers. We asked for testimony on a number of items, which I'm sure will be provided.
All right, motion to accept the waivers?
Move.
So move.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All get opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll first call Marc Jimigliano, our site engineer.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide, is it the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
My name's Mark Jimigliano, spelled J-I-M-I-G-L-I-A-N-O.
And you're testifying as?
As a professional engineer.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Uh, yes, I'm a professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I've been working as an engineer for over 25 years, licensed since 2008. Testified in front of numerous planning and zoning boards across northern New Jersey.
Chairman's qualifications are on the record for your approval.
Any questions of the board? Witness is accepted. Thank you.
Mark, you've heard my proffer to the board about what we hope to do this evening with the minor subdivision line adjustment, as well as my very brief summary of fashion characterization of the area. If you would, Mark, start taking the board into the property, from the applicant in, what we've got around us, what's existing, identify what we're proposing. And if we're showing the board a sheet that's not on file, unless identified right away, that won't be a problem at all. Okay, what I did is I brought the plans with me that we submitted to the board. And I think the best plan for us all to look at would be sheet two of four of the minor subdivision plans.
Mind moving closer to the microphone? I apologize, would you mind moving closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
It's not for purpose of hearing you, it's for the recording that we'll need.
Yeah, but you tell him to get closer, he starts singing, so. Get what you asked for, be careful. So it'd be sheet two of four, I don't have that up there, I'm going to just put that up on the board. That plan on the left-hand side shows the existing conditions of the site. On the right-hand side shows what we're proposing. On the right-hand, on the left-hand side, you can see the property's located at the intersection of Halsey Road and Summit Road in town. It's actually two lots. And lot 1 is a corner lot at the intersection, and it contains a single-family home, detached garage, and two driveways. There's one driveway that accesses the garage off of Halsey Road, and another driveway that accesses the property off of.
off of, uh, Summit Avenue. Um, lot sixteen is an undeveloped lot, uh, just to the, the south of it, and, uh, that has some, um, uh, fire pit and, uh, maybe a garden area, but it's largely undeveloped. Uh, the property, uh, is generally level. Uh, there are no environmental constraints, no steep slopes, no wetlands or floodplains. Uh, there's a moderate slope from Halsey Road diagonally across the lot to the south toward Summit Avenue. So, any stormwater that runs off the property now goes to the drainage system in Summit Avenue. Uh, the properties are located in the, um, R4 Zone District, which requires a six thousand square foot minimum lot size and a sixty-foot lot, minimum lot width. Uh, lot one is the oversized lot, uh, has nine thousand six hundred and eleven square feet and, uh, a lot width of a hundred and twenty-four feet. Uh, lot sixteen, though, is undersized, there's only thirty-six hundred square feet where six thousand's required, and it has a lot width of forty feet where sixty feet's required. Uh, so it's an undersized lot. Um, and, uh, the, uh, lot one, which is a corner lot, is uniquely shaped. Um, it's not your typical corner lot where the, uh, roads run into each other perpendicular to each other, uh, where you have a nice rectangular-shaped lot. There's a much narrower, smaller angle between the roads, uh, where this, where lot one's located, so you can see that the lot gets narrower as you move away from Summit Road, Summit Ave. And, um, it really shrinks down the building box. Uh, as a result of the, uh, the unique shape of the lot, uh, and there are some setbacks, existing, uh, non-conforming conditions that are, uh, exist on that property. Uh, lot number one has a, um, non-conforming front yard setback on both Halsey and Summit. Uh, it also has a garage, which is, uh, non-conforming because it's separated from the house and it's too close to the lot line. Uh, this is the lot line to the east or, uh, above the home on the plan. Uh, it's only five point seven feet away from the lot line where, um, a, an accessory structure would need to be ten feet from a rear yard and six feet from a side yard. The, uh, what we're proposing is shown on the, on the right-hand side, and what we're proposing to do is take fifteen hundred square feet from the larger lot, lot one, and add it to the smaller lot, lot sixteen. Uh, we contacted the zoning, the tax assessor, and they gave us proposed lot numbers for these lots. Uh, lot number one will remain as lot one. Uh, lot sixteen will be called lot sixteen point oh one, so I'll refer to them that way as I, I move forward with my testimony. Um, but we're going to just move the lot line, uh, between the lots at fifteen hundred square feet to the smaller lot, and, uh, as a result, uh, lot number one will be eight thousand one hundred and eleven square feet, which is still conforming, six thousand square feet's, uh, required, and, um, have a lot width still of a hundred and twenty-four feet, uh, and that's conforming because, uh, sixty feet's required. Lot sixteen point oh one will get larger, um, have a lot area of five thousand one hundred square feet, that's still slightly undersized because six thousand square feet's allowed, and it have a lot width of fifty-one feet, still slightly undersized because sixty feet's allowed. The main reason we can't move the lot line any further and create two conforming lots is because of the existing home. Uh, the existing home, uh, would be, uh, too close to the lot line, would actually be across the lot line if we created two conforming lots. And because of that, the shape of the, of lot number one, uh, where the, the building envelope gets very narrow, we couldn't even knock down the home and construct a conforming home, um, because of the, the shape of the lot. So instead of, uh, constructing a new home that doesn't conform, we're going to, uh, renovate the existing home. Um, we'll maintain the existing front yard setbacks, um, and, uh, add a second level to the home. We're going to get rid of the detached garage, which is non-conforming, and construct an attached garage to the home. And, um, that will move that garage farther away from the neighbor, um, to the east. At, uh, lot sixteen point oh one, uh, we propose to construct a new single-family home. You can see on that plan that it can be built entirely within the building envelope. Uh, we don't need any setbacks, even though the lot is slightly undersized. Um, and, uh, that'll be just a two-story home, a single-family home with a single car garage in the front and a driveway off of Summit. At lot, uh, one, uh, there are a couple variances. Uh, because we're going to attach the garage to the home, that becomes part of the principal structure, and so it has to meet the principal building setbacks. Uh, the garage will be twelve point three feet from the property line, uh, where twenty feet's required. Uh, so that will be a, uh, rear yard setback variance. Um, and again, that, uh, the garage, though, is moved farther away from the neighbor. Um, so it's an improvement over the existing conditions. And at lot one, we also need a building coverage variance. Uh, there's a very small increase, fifty-eight square foot increase in the building coverage on the property. However, because we're making the lot smaller, the percentage of the lots that's covered is, uh, is greater now, so we have a twenty-one point nine percent building coverage where, uh, twenty feet's required. At, uh, lot sixteen point oh one, we do need the two, um, lot size variances, the lot area, uh, and lot width, and we also need a building coverage variance of, uh, twenty-three point nine percent where twenty percent's required because it is a slightly undersized lot. Now, uh, as Larry mentioned, the, uh, architect's going to give you more details about the, the home, and, uh, the planner will, uh, give the, uh, discuss the variances and the, the proof and the support for the variances. Uh, but just a couple other things I'd like to mention, um, stormwater management, uh, it's something that we look at with every project. Um, and, uh, in this particular project, lot one, we're going to reduce the amount of impervious coverage on the lot. We're doing that by, uh, bringing the garage, uh, closer to the home, which shortens that driveway, and we're eliminating the other driveway which comes off of Summit. So, the amount of impervious coverage on lot one will be reduced, uh, which will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff from the site and be a benefit to the, uh, to the area. At lot, uh, sixteen point oh one, uh, that, development of that property will be subject to the new building, uh, requirements in town, there'll be a drywell for the roof area, so any of the water that lands on the roof will go into the ground instead of running off to the road. Um, and in total, the total amount of stormwater leaving the site will be less than it is today, so it will be an improvement over existing conditions.
Mark, before we open you up to questions of the board, give just a couple of quick things to someone. I want to focus on the proposed lot, because lot one essentially is what it is, it's developed, and it's giving away some land that'll make lot sixteen more developable. So the deviations on lot sixteen, proposed lot sixteen point oh one. Two of the items are actually improving, as proposed, right? Lot area is remarkably increasing, as proposed.
That's correct.
And lot width is also increasing, as proposed, by eleven feet.
That's correct.
So the one deviation that we really have here that is an increase in, uh, non-conformance is building coverage by three point nine percent.
That, that's correct.
Your office had an opportunity to prepare a building study in connection with the area, is that right? To assess the building coverage of properties in our neighborhood in our R4 zone?
Yes, we did.
And, Mr. Chairman, we're going to defer a further discussion on that to our planner with the variance groups, but I just want to confirm, Mark, the majority of the homes in your building study are also non-conforming, pretty much in keeping with exactly what you're proposing, is that right?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would be, Mr. Jimigliano available with any questions he and his staff may have?
All right. Mr. Cagiano, do you have any questions for the engineer?
No, uh, I just wanted to make the board understand that stormwater will be reviewed if this is a, you know, minor subdivision, gets reviewed in detail at when they submit, uh, a lot rating plan, a lot weight, all the details, grade, the roof drain pipes, directions, and all that. That's not at this board level to, when, uh, if it's approved, it goes at the, uh, it gets reviewed for a lot rating plan. So, uh, I don't have many comments on the, um, um, stormwater. Uh, my only question was, I'm looking at the, the building coverage, I just had a question for the, for the engineer, I guess it's the engineer, but, uh, on, uh, proposed lot one, the, the garage, the building coverage is just slightly higher than, uh, than what's allowed. Is that garage of, uh, I guess, a standard size, or can it be shrunk at all to make the lot, uh, conforming with the, uh, building coverage?
Um, the, I think the architect probably give you more detail on the garage.
Um, that's, that's all I had.
Mr. Mealy?
Mr. Chairman, uh, in our packet, we received a memo from the water department, but it's dated February twelfth, quite a while back. And it states that water allocation is currently not available and is under evaluation. Has that been accomplished since then?
If I could, I think there was a subsequent memo from the water department.
Was there?
Uh, of May twelfth. Also mentions the water allocation issue, thank you for bringing that up. Um, that it is not available for demand of more than fifteen hundred gallons a day, and they've asked that, um, the applicant provide the proposed average daily water demand for the proposed development.
Um, I don't have that number offhand, but I can give it to you, uh, a little later in the meeting, yeah.
This is related to the township's current scarce water or, water, resource order.
It's an issue you know that has to work through, in this case started before the pandemic, so that's why it's a long time ago, you know, it was a mo, but, uh, it's an issue we've been following, and our engineers have been tracking the actions since February, we're still working on that. Without water, it's not an issue, but, but now we're trying to, the rest side of the house.
The approval, like every approval, will be subject to all other necessary municipal approvals, which would include water.
Mr. Carlson, that was going to be my next question. Thank you.
Any other questions for the engineer? I, I have just one, what, what are the current, uh, non-conforming issues on lot sixteen?
Um, there are front yard setback, uh, non-conformities of both roads.
Um, I, I'm sorry, there's a building on sixteen?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, a, a lot sixteen.
Yes.
You said sixteen. Uh, lot sixteen is just an undersized lot.
Okay.
So it's, uh, the lot size and the lot width.
And what are the non-conformance on lot one?
Uh, lot one has the setback, uh, non-conformities and the, uh, accessory building setback.
Okay.
As well.
All right. That answers my questions. Any other questions from the board? Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second of three witnesses, Mr. Chairman, our project architect, Mr. Keith Chambers. With this witness, we do anticipate, um, introducing exhibits, we have some site photos in the area, but we'll, we'll let you know when you see those that are not on file, we'll mark those accordingly when we get to that.
I just said, say, take the microphone with him when he talks. If you'd raise your right hand, please, do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
It's Keith T. Chambers, C.H.A.M.B.E.R.S.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience, please?
Yes, I've been licensed since nineteen ninety-two, I've testified in many boards over the period. Um, I am licensed in New Jersey and Pennsylvania, and, like I said, I have testified before boards before.
Chairman's qualifications are submitted for your approval.
Any questions from the board? Witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've had an opportunity to announce your, your introduction, you've heard Mark's testimony on site improvements, existing non-conformities and how we're improving many of them and the other variances. Now, like, the, zoning of the actual structure itself is proposing.
Right.
Want to work from the outside in, it looks like, with the elevations, and, and when you do reference something, keep that, we've got it on file, let us know, we'll start looking. Only black and white, so we're identical.
These are, uh, these are identical to what was filed, they're just, put them up for reference. I do have a set here that shows site photographs of area around Halsey Road and Summit Road. I'm just going to walk up here and put this.
I believe we're on A1.
Two sides, you want A1 for both sides, is that okay?
That's fine.
Well, first, let me just put this here, and we'll talk about, first of all, go through the. This is the, uh, S.K. one and S.K. one A, or the elevations, and I want to start with the plan. This is the existing, uh, Halsey Road house. Um, like we said, we got rid of the detached garage and added the garage to it. There was a question that came up about the size of the garage. It's actually a substandard, you know, depth of nineteen feet, but twenty-four feet to get two eight-foot bays, uh, nine foot, sorry, nine-foot garage doors for getting the cars in, which is this pretty standard two-car garage being added on to the existing home to help with the setbacks. Um, the existing first floor is being renovated inside, but the structure outside is being reused. And we're going up on top and providing, you know, we have approximately seventeen hundred and seventy-two square feet on the first floor and then seventeen twelve on the second floor, and we're presenting, you know, for Halsey Road, elevations. Um, this, there was a question raised about the scale of the side elevation on Summit, and this, this portion that you see here is about twenty-seven feet back from this elevation, so the scale is not overwhelming for that, that area, and we're going to have our two-story structure with the new one right next to it. Um, the, the new, the new structure, the two-story new structure that's going to go on the, the other lot is a one, one-car garage, two stories. We call it a narrow lot house, but it's not really that narrow, it's, it, you know, it's very comfortable. Thirty, thirty feet six inches wide, and it, you know, one-car garage. And I just wanted to also go into what's around the, the structures.
So this is going to be A1 now, Keith, that you referred to the two-sided photo board.
Right. And this just.
You can just mark it on there, seven feet.
Yep. A1. Just wanted to show the area a little bit across from the Halsey Road portion of the house. We have the firehouse and some other structures on Halsey Road, um, that are presently happening. This is on Summit Road down the street from our house, where they're adding a second story on, and you can see the scale of it here. And we have these, these homes that are built all around Lake Precipiny area. I drove around and showed some of these houses that are being presented, which are typical houses in, in that area. And, you know, reveal that our, our house that we're presenting is not anything different than what's built already in that area, traveling on Halsey Road and around the area.
Keith, going back down to your elevation plans.
Mm-hmm.
You've heard testimony from Mark Jimigliano that the lot area is increasing by three feet hundred square feet as proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Lot width is increasing by eleven to twelve feet as proposed, and you cited a structure on lot sixteen. In my personal opinion, the structure you cited, which does confirm, fits within all applicable building envelope, so thanks for watching, you're welcome, right?
Right.
So it fits in the building envelope, is the structure you cited an appropriate lot, appropriately sized structure for that lot, in your personal opinion?
Yes, yes.
And it's in keeping with the size, scale, and massing of the structures in the neighborhood?
That, that's correct.
Would you mind taking a look through the skin a little bit of the elevation, so they know what you can see here at this, for proof?
Right. Um, basically, we're proposing to have, um, stone or brick on the, the large portion here, and just siding in, um, the existing, I don't know if you want to use these or not, or the Larry, these are the existing homes, but what's there now?
On what we're talking about now?
Yes, this is.
Yeah, what?
You can mark that, and we can pass it on to the board if you'd like, just that, those photos?
Yeah, these three photos.
Why don't you mark the whole packet A2?
Yeah, and we can start with A2, Keith, and you can work around the rooms to spread out.
Those are what I've submitted there are just the existing houses there on Halsey Road now, and what we're planning to renovate it into with the improvement of the materials, the siding, and the look of the structure itself. And then the existing, I'm sorry, proposed next house is again, narrow lot with, you know, materials, materials, modern materials, and siding, and the peaks to blend into the, the scale of the neighborhood.
You've designed homes before for Alpha Investments?
Yes. Yes. Yes, I have.
They build what they promise they're going to build, is that right?
Yes. And some of those pictures that I've shown you are recent projects that we've completed in Parsippany on Orston Road. There's two lots that we did right next to each other, these type houses, you know, the scale and, and the materials and everything that we've done.
Your structure, so last question I have for you, Keith, your structure itself, you know, it fits in the building envelope. Everything else about the box, we'll call it the box. Conforms to building height requirements?
Yes. There was a question raised on, you know, doesn't seem to be that many windows on the sides of the project. Well, there's a building code requirement for when you're that close to a, you know, property line that you can't have certain square footage of windows. You're only allowed a certain amount of square footage of windows. So that's why some of, you know, the side elevation looks a little bleak. But with the, you know, the, the building codes, there's regulations on that.
So make it so, but from an architectural design standpoint, insurance balance levels are appropriate, in your opinion?
That's correct.
Just get your, I think, Mr. Chambers, to know if any questions might add.
All right. Any questions from our professionals? Any questions from our board? Mr. Fageri.
So what is the, I might have missed it or didn't. Didn't read it properly, but what is the proposed height of these two new buildings?
Yep, I can give you that.
And how do you measure? Are you measuring from curb? Are you measuring from lowest point?
It's from finished grade to midway up the, the slope. But what's shown here, just for reference, is 25 foot nine. So nothing is exceeding the 35 foot that you're, 30 foot that you're allowed in this, in that area.
And what is it for Lot 1?
This one's 2711, and that's to the, to ridge line. From finished grade to the ridge line is 2711.
So top height conforms for both?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sir, what's the square footage of each of the properties, or proposed? Not, not the properties, I mean the, the structures, yeah.
Right. Let me just, I wrote it down here, sorry. The total, or just the?
Each individually.
Each individually. The larger structure is 1,722 square feet. That's footprint.
And total livable space?
Total livable space is 1306 on the first floor. Sorry, and then another, sorry, 1512 on the second floor.
You said Lot, Lot 1 on the plan says it's 1778. Building coverage is 21.9 for 1778.
1778, sorry.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it says for Lot 1, 3524 for the gross floor area?
That's, that's correct. That's the two floors together. Sorry.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five, 24.
Okay, because the numbers you gave are adding, sir, to 28.
So Lot 1 is 3,500.
For the two floors, I'm sorry, yeah.
Right, total, total, you have total habitable area.
Right, habitable, I mean, I, I didn't count the garage and habitable area, that's.
Okay.
Which is a 456.
How about Lot 16?
The, the smaller house, 914. First floor area is 91458 with garage of 279. Total gross area is 119374, covered porch is 24. And then the second floor for the same structure is 1,052.70.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Hernandez.
How close is the, the house on Lot 16 to the existing neighborhood? The new house that's in Lot 16, where there's nothing now. Lot 16 is like, pretty much like the backyard of Lot 1 right now, right? It just seems really tight to me.
Orange here, you just mentioned.
Yeah. These, these here, between?
Yeah, the, the proposed new house on Lot 16, where there is no existing house.
Right, there's no existing house here, and we're.
How close is it to the neighbor?
This neighbor here?
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the setback of there, and it's 10.
About, about 20 feet.
About 20 feet. Because we have 10.6, sorry, 10.3 on this side, and the neighbors probably have about the same.
Part of the sensitivity development, what Keith was charging for Harry's plans was honor the setbacks. Don't go beyond the setbacks. So Lot 16, as we're in, it's in the envelope, you know, it's, it's one thing if we were leaning into these side yard setback, but the strict parameters of development here were can you create right-sized houses within the envelope, which is what we've successfully done here.
And the lot width is conforming as well?
No.
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 Lot width is improving as proposed on Lot 16. Right now, it's 40 feet, it's going to 51. It's nine feet shy of required lot width.
Just to be clear, I think to answer your question, it looks like from the plan, it's eight feet off the property line, which is conforming.
It's just perception, because there's nothing there now. I want to see everything, and it's just, with the renovation of the Lot 1 and then that, I just feel, and I do appreciate that you showed pictures of a lot of the houses in the area, but there are a lot of houses that are original to that area that are a lot smaller. And.
Right.
My master plan, one of the things we were talking about is building and developing so that there's not that disparity. I did see that big house that's being built, and it's like just towering over the one that's right next to it.
Yeah.
So we know that, that person, maybe it's the Lot 16, it's supposed to be the other house. Right now, it's just perception.
Right.
You know, I'm afraid about the bulkiness on that corner.
I can say this for what it's worth, but again, this isn't testimony, it's just an observation. There was a lot of sensitivity on the part of developer. He's done this for decades in this community where he lives. There was a lot of sensitivity to right-sized development on undeveloped Lot 16. So, so that's been a very sensitive issue is what goes where on Lot 16. And that's why we designed this the way we had it programmed this way to minimize deviations and to increase the lot area to Lot 1's, or the detriment of lot area, but still oversized. So there has been a, a key level of weirdness that's in the process for sure.
So with that Lot 16 house being towering over the lot, don't we call the one that's next to it, that of the net, you have?
No, Keith, Keith, you showed the elevations about the structure, the structure advancing.
Yeah, I mean, from the, the narrow, I'm calling the narrow lot house overshadowing this one, they're, you know, they're probably at the same elevation. They wouldn't be towering over it at all. And, you know, between these two houses, which are existing, you have the same comparison as what we've been having here.
Question from Ms. Deely?
Uh, yes. Can I see the, the plan that shows the windows on the side of the house on Lot 16.01 that's going to be looking into the rear yard of Lot 1?
The left side elevation here, there's just a double set of window here and a bathroom window there. There's no.
Okay, so the two on the bottom is probably, I forget on the plan, was it a dining room or?
Yes, it's, yes, it's the dining room, you're right.
Okay, so the dining room windows will look out into the backyard of Lot 1?
That's correct.
Because they don't really have a backyard proposed. It's only eight feet.
That's correct.
Okay.
Other, other than that, it's just kitchen cabinetry here and no windows on the side of the living room areas.
Okay. And the se, what was the second floor when there was, it was just the bathroom?
It's just the bathroom, over the toilet, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chambers, while you're on the elevations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was my comment on the windows issue.
Right.
So with, you know, with the fire code and building code, as you indicated, what else could be done to perhaps mitigate that blank wall effect?
Well, we can certainly, you know, get to the, we didn't, we didn't push the envelope with the, with the amount of windows. My client is willing to put more windows in here, you know, if the building department will allow it, you know, but we're going to certainly keep it within what's required by the building code. Because, believe me, we want more light in and we want, you know.
Right. But what, what kind of changes, if any, would that require to your floor plans?
Uh, just add.
Add some windows.
What's that, just adding, you know, showing windows on the floor plans or wherever we choose to put, if we put a window in the side of the bedroom, the side of the bedroom, you know, we're just adding it to the floor plan.
So would it change your move around, I mean, through floor plans? Would it just be?
It would just be a punk, you know, exactly, showing more glass in the sidewall.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fageri.
Uh, getting back to the, the height issue, which, which you can tell some of us are concerned about, how did you calculate, or how do you estimate your finished grade? And what is the relationship between your finished grade and street level, which is where 99% of the people will experience the building, walking or driving by?
We let the engineer talk.
Yeah, and the finished grade is probably three feet above, three or four feet above street level.
Right, and I.
Even if it's sitting at the street, it'll still be, appear to be smaller, lower than the.
Well, it's very close. I heard a number, 26 feet and change. So if we start adding.
That's to the ridge, though, and the township allows to the mid-height of the sloped roof, so.
But it conforms, at the end of the day, if we conform height, there's no bulk deviation for height, there's definitely no D6 deviation for height. I understand the point, but we can, even when you measure the, we're concerned with length of the ridge, your confidence, if you're changing the street, it's really still confirmed. That's not how it's got to, is it?
No, yeah.
And it's 35 feet this week, you're allowable.
It's 35 feet there?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the architect? All right, please proceed with your next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final witness, our project planner, Mr. Keith Karlebach.
Sir, if you would just make sure you speak into the microphone, please? If you'd raise your right hand, do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
David Karlebach, K-A-R-L-E-B-A-C-H.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Uh, yes, I have a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner, and I have been for 26 years. I previously qualified and testified before planning boards and boards of adjustment throughout the state. I've testified in front of the Parsippany Board of Adjustment dozens of times.
They don't count, though.
Any questions of this witness? All right, witness is acceptable. Please continue.
Dave, before you begin, just a couple of quick questions. You are. You're doing your homework now, David. That's how you do stuff. You're familiar with the project plan, that fair and sound?
Yes.
Familiar with the neighborhood and you offer a room, just here?
Yes, I am.
And familiar with the project plan, how my, thanks for all of my chambers architecture, is that right?
Yes.
And you've heard all the testimony during this evening before the case so far?
I have.
And you got an opportunity to prepare the benefit of your own analysis and conclusion with respect to the variances requested, is that right?
Yes, I have.
So would that, Dave, if you would, please take the board through your analysis as to your proposal, your proposed lot development on 16, as well as usually the justification for that.
Okay, fine. I think the engineer did a very good job describing the site, what's existing today. If we look at Lot 1, and, and there's actually photographs of the dwelling on Lot 1. You can see it's an older structure. I think it was built in 1945. It's in desperate need of a renovation. Old outdated structure. And really, what, what's happening here is a vast improvement to, to that building. Uh, and I know there's a concern, you know, we're adding an additional dwelling, and we're adding a second story onto this dwelling. Is it too much building? Is it too much mass? But, and I know that the board members are concerned because there are some very small lots in this neighborhood, as small as 4,000 square feet with little cottages on them. And I grew up in the 1960s in a, in a cottage myself. Many of the buildings were only 1,000 square feet. Uh, but fact is, board members, that nobody is building 1,000 square foot homes anymore. Back in the 1950s and 1960s, it wasn't unusual for three brothers to share one bedroom or for the entire family to share one bathroom. But we don't live that way anymore. It just doesn't happen. So homes, the average size home now, I think, is about 2,640 square feet. That's the average size home. We're going to run up against situations where we have, you know, larger homes that, you know, but smaller homes. That's the dynamics of land planning. It just happens that way. So the best thing we can do is to try and control the bulk. And you heard Lot 16, it's going to observe all of the setback requirements and the height requirement. That's the best we can do on Lot 16. And that's really the applicant's effort to try and integrate these homes into the community, not make them so massive that they're out of scale or out of character with the neighborhood. And I think they've accomplished that. In terms of the surrounding area, this is really a solid, single-family neighborhood. You have Lake Parsippany Park, a short distance to the southwest. The fire department is about 300 feet to the northwest. And commercial use is about 300 feet to the east of Long Halsey Road. Otherwise, all single-family homes. And if you look at the very first sheet of the exhibit, you could.
A3, where you mark this, Mr. Chairman, was to be explained with the.
Okay, for the record, this will be A3. So A3 shows to you that this is really not entirely a homogeneous neighborhood. There are a mixture of smaller homes on smaller lots and larger-sized homes on larger lots. I think, and that's why I overlain the tax map, tax lots onto this aerial photograph, just to show that, that it's a pretty diverse neighborhood. Now, this is, as we said, it's an R4, single-family zone. It permits homes on 6,000 square foot lots. We went through all of the variances that are required, so I won't rename them. But I think these variances are recognizable under the C2 criteria. In other words, there's no complaint of hardship. Instead, it's more of a benefits versus burdens test. So an applicant seeking a C2 variance has to meet five different prongs. You have to show that the variance relates to a specific piece of property. In other words, what makes it distinctive from the other properties in the zone. In this case, you have a piece of property that's more than two times the minimum lotary requirements, in excess of 13,000 square feet, where only 6,000 square feet is required. Secondly, you have to show that the purposes of the municipal, municipal land use law would be advanced by this deviation. And then meet both prongs of the negative criteria. No substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance, no substantial detriment to the public good. And then the fifth step, of course, is that balancing whether or not the public benefits that are conferred outweigh any detriments associated with the variances. So, again, the focus on the C2 variance is that the site characteristics present an opportunity for improved planning and zoning at this site. And I believe that's exactly what's occurring here. This application does advance two important purposes of the municipal land use law. One of them is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities, and regions, and preservation of the environment. And here, the benefit of zoning, which is, in this case, more harmonious lot sizes, could be seen as outweighing any detriment. So given that establishing appropriate population densities is a recognized per. So given that establishing appropriate population densities is a recognized purpose of zoning, uh, the re-subdivision of this land, I think, is consistent with that statutory objective. The implied density in this zone is 7.26 dwelling units per acre. Uh, the proposal for two dwelling units on a combined lot area of .303, that yields a density of 6.6 dwelling units per acre. That's lower than the implied density, okay? This proposal is consistent and compatible with the established pattern of residential development in this neighborhood. Uh, the building coverage is similar to the building coverages in the neighborhood, particularly in blocks, uh, 322 and 323. That's this block and the block, uh, just below it or just to the, uh, south... southwest of it. Uh, there are some lots in the neighborhood which do not satisfy the lot area requirement. Some of them, as I said, are on lots as small as 4,000 square feet. Most of the lots do, in fact, comply. Uh, but as I said, there is some diversity in this neighborhood with respect to the lot sizes and the home sizes. Another purpose of the municipal land use law is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic designs and arrangements. And here, the granting the variances would enable this applicant to preserve and renovate a dwelling that's in desperate need of a renovation, and it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I think it's much more preferable than a do-nothing alternative, than to just let this home sit here and, and rot on the vine. Uh, this applicant, I believe, is delivering a superior product, uh, to the township. It updates an older structure with modern architectural treatments. It adds visual interest in front of the dwelling, and it preserves neighborhood harmony. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. Uh, there's the improvement in the appearance of the building on, on Lot 1. Um, and a removal of the existing driveway creates more usable rear yard area. So I know there was a comment, I believe this was the board planner's comment, that, uh, yes, there is an abbreviated backyard. I think that's gonna happen most of the time when you have corner lots in, in a zone that only permits six, or only requires 6,000-square-foot lots. Um, they're encumbered with two front yard setbacks. It's a smallish lot to begin with. And I think if you look at the aerial, uh, map on Page 1, you can see some of those corner lots do have very small, uh, rear yards. Uh, but that is being improved in the case of Lot 1. The proposal creates lots that are similar in area and proportion to the neighborhood. And although the lot on, although the building on Lot 1 has increased in length, the driveway is stepped back from the rest of the dwelling. So you don't have this, uh, big monolith, okay? You don't have this big slap-sided building. It does have some relief, and it does have that visual interest. The smaller dwelling on Lot 16 creates an opportunity for someone who could not otherwise to, uh, afford to live, uh, in the township. So, again, that's a goal of just about every single master plan, to provide that diversity of housing types, um, and housing styles, so we include everybody. And this is a, a smaller house, uh, so, like I said, maybe a small family or even a single person desiring to live in a, in a single-family home, uh, can afford to do so. I believe any perceived detriment does not rise to the level of a substantial detriment. In fact, the overall effect is to improve the property and the neighborhood. Uh, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment of the zoning ordinance. The proposal is consistent and compatible with the 6,000-square-foot minimum lot area requirement and the implied density for this zone. Uh, the application meets all the high tiers of zoning. The use is permitted, uh, the height is permitted, the maximum lot coverage and the density when we consider both lots. There's no planning benefit achieved by removing the existing dwelling and starting anew. The preservation of the existing home, uh, I think is of greater importance here. The proposal brings Lot 16 closer to conformity with the zone with respect to the lot area and lot width. It also creates a more uniformly shaped lot. Um, if you were to start with a complete, with a blank slate, you would probably create a lot that's two ti- the depth is two times the width. That's the golden rule. So in the case of a lot that has 100-foot, uh, lot depth, you would wanna see a 50-foot lot width, and that's exactly what we have here. So you have a perfectly rectangular lot with those proportions that we're looking for. Two times the, uh, the lot width is the lot depth, and I don't think there are any encumbrances to development on that property. So it's a nicely proportioned 5,000-square-foot lot. And with the, uh, now on Lot 1, we're talking about Lot 1 now, with the attached garage, it creates a rear yard setback, but it does eliminate an accessory side yard variance. And more importantly, it removes an old outdated detached garage and replaces it with new, uh, structure, which with actually has a greater setback, uh, to the east. And although Lot 16 necessitates a building coverage variance, this is a very modestly sized, uh, home. It meets all of the setback requirements. Any further reduction in the footprint of the building, I think, would yield a substandard-sized home. So I think it's a, a fairly reasonably, uh, sized and proportioned home. And while a building coverage variance is triggered on Lot 1, uh, you heard the engineer describe, there's only a very small increase in the amount of, uh, the footprint of the building. Um, and that variance is really triggered by the lot shrinking in size, not so much increasing the size of the footprint. Uh, creating more harmonious lot sizes allows building massing and setbacks more consistent with the neighborhood pattern, and that's, uh, exactly what's happening here. And the diminished lot width, I don't believe, uh, causes any damage to the integrity of the zone. The lot sizes and the lot configurations are a better planning alternative for both of these lots. Uh, if you were to increase the, uh, the lot, uh, the size of Lot 16, uh, then you're really creating an unusually shaped lot and a, a smaller lot than you'd like to see on, on Lot 1. So I believe the proportions are correct, uh, and the building envelopes are correct as well. I think this is the best job that could be achieved, uh, with this piece of property. I did have a chance to look at the 2020 master plan, and it does make reference to the, um... to the medium-density residential land use category. I'm gonna read a passage from the master plan. It says, "It is noted that both Lake Parsippany and Lake Hayawatha are experiencing new development in the form of teardowns and minor subdivisions. This development represents positive investment in these neighborhoods, and in most cases, the opportunity to replace outdated housing stock with more modern alternatives." Uh, so here, this fits squarely within one of the, uh, recommendations in the master plan. And that's a goal of virtually every suburban community, uh, is to, uh, replace older housing stock with new housing stock. Uh, you know, we have a lot of pre-war homes. We have homes that were built just after the war, aging homes. Um, and the newer homes, we just find have more in the way of amenities, uh, that people are seeking today. So, uh, again, positive investment in the community, uh, by this applicant. I think the board should feel very comfortable in granting, uh, this minor subdivision request along with the C variances that are being sought.
Dave, would you, you know, we talked about massing and, and all of those setbacks, and the height. The one thing we don't conform with is building coverage. If extra water, we indicated for a prepared building study. And we'll bring it up now, and, and Mr. Chairman, we'll mark this. I think we're up to A4. We'll mark this. It's an inventory of just about all the properties that we have overlaid on Mr. Karlebach's A3 planning exhibit, showing non-conforming building coverage of the neighborhood, to show how we're aligned with those levels. And, and Dave, if you would, we still have you on the hot seat here. If you would just give the board those inclusive calculations we have there as to the lot study, what conforms, what doesn't, and what percentages we're looking at.
Right. Okay, so, uh, again, the, the maximum permitted coverage is, uh, 20%. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, uh, and I think I stated during testimony that there are many, uh, of the lots in blocks, uh, 323, which is the block that we're included in, and the block to the southwest, which is block 322, exceed, uh, that percentage. And those are all shaded in here on this map. So you can see the majority, the vast majority of the lots on those two blocks, uh, exceed that lot area requirement. They're all included, I should say, the lot coverage requirement. And there is a table here in the lower left-hand corner which shows, and I haven't done a precise calculation, uh, but you can see many, 24, 25%, 27%, so consistently above, uh, the, the permitted, uh, coverages. Uh, so it's not, I guess the conclusion is that, uh, yes, it's very much, uh, consistent with what's existing in this neighborhood, uh, today.
The summary indicates 44 lots removed and 31 exceed building coverage under 44.
That's, you know, and, uh, again, if you look at the aerial photograph, I think it, it shows you, uh... It, it probably indicates that, along with some of the, uh, you know, the setbacks, the massing in the building, so on and so forth. It's, you can just look at the aerial photograph and, and make that, uh, decision for yourself. But that's, that's typical of this neighborhood, and that's what I observed when I drove out there.
Dave, the last question I have for you is, we're trying to help Lot 16, you have a single-family residence out there in Rockport, though. We're helping by making it 1,500 square feet bigger, 11 feet wider, giving it area from Lot 1. And we're putting on there a nice-looking house that meets all of the setbacks and height. How else could we put a house there to make it conform? I know it's sort of a rhetorical question, but what else could be done?
Yeah, I mean, the way the lot exists today, there's, there's nothing much can be done. Because once you start applying those setbacks to this lot, this very, I think it's, uh, 3,600 square feet, um, and it's unusually configured, it doesn't, it's not perfectly rectangular, uh, you're gonna have a, a dollhouse. It's just not gonna fit in. And quite frankly, I don't think it's a, a very salable, a very marketable building at that point. So the idea is, again, subtract some of the land area from Lot 1, which is 1.6 times the minimum lot area requirement in the zone. It's over 9,000 square feet, 9,600 square feet, I believe. Uh, so much, much larger than it used to be. Why don't we do something where it makes both lots a little bit better? So subtract from one, add to the other, and then, uh, create those building envelopes that make sense.
We've, we've sort of been positive with this as a fortuitous opportunity for Lot 1 to give back some excess and Lot 16 to gain some efficiency. Thank you, Dave. Mr. Chairman, if you would, Mr. Karlebach, if you have any questions?
Okay. Ms. Pavate, anything for the witness?
Um, I think nothing for the planner. I mean, I will note, uh, your quote of the master plan. The flip side of that quote was that redevelopment, and I mean that with a small r, so revitalization of this neighborhood needs to occur with a balance for, for what's already there as well. But I actually did have a couple, a question for the engineer, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'm a little bit confused, and it's kind of been bugging me. The, what you're calling the, uh, rear yard of the existing lot, Lot 1, to me is more like a side yard. So that's the, where it's, would go to 12 point, 12 feet, 3 inches. Why is that characterized as a rear yard as opposed to the, um, southern frontage of that, of that lot being the rear yard?
Um, I, I don't know the, the reason it was, uh, selected that way. I think the ordinance says that, uh, with a corner lot, that, uh, one lot is, um, uh, selected as the rear yard and one is the, uh, the side yard, and then there are two, um, front yards.
Right, right. Because there, there are the two front yards on those two street frontages. That makes sense. If you were looking at the actual rear of the house, which it, it fronts onto the, the two roads, and the rear of the house, uh, is on the southern side, um, that should be, by zoning code, should be a 20-foot setback. Uh, what's here is eight, uh, which if you're calling it a side yard, that conforms. Um, so I'm just wondering if, and I think that's where I'm coming down with why this is a challenge, is because basically there is no more rear yard in this, with this lot. The, the vacant lot currently serves as the rear yard. It, it has improvements on it which are part of the rear yard. So when you move this line, it, it essentially has no yard left. Uh, and, and I think that was spoken to. But, um, I, I'm just curious about, about that selection.
It also has...
How many thoughts on that?
I can tell you also, there is no rear yard today. Lot 16 is not the rear yard of Lot 1.
Correct, correct. But, but the owners are using it as such, and so it is, it is a change.
Under prior ownership, years ago, maybe, under current ownership, they are not.
Okay. Are the lots owned by the same person?
They are not.
They are not?
Not even affiliated entities.
So in, but at one time, they were.
Years ago, they were, and there was a bleeding of my use on Lot 1.
Yeah. Yeah, because it, the zoning ordinance and the tax assessor wouldn't have allowed that lot normally to have sold. We would have required them to stay as one and doctrine of merger. So they, that to us in zoning would have been one lot as it was to the tax assessor, so.
I'm familiar with the locker doctrine. Today, they are in separate ownership. And they're trying to propose a solution to Lot 16, which is otherwise unbuildable, uh, without us trying to help it, you know, and make it bigger than Lot 1. Uh, so, so that's where we are today. But I, I agree.
And, um, the only other comment I had in my memo, I, I didn't really know who to ask, because you don't have a landscape architect, which I think is okay. I think you're the best. Um, can you speak to the existing, um, vegetation on the two sites, the two lots? And what, you know, what will remain? What will be removed? Can you mitigate removal?
Yeah, I mean, there are quite a few trees on Lot 16. Um, many of the, some of the trees, about 10 of them, will need to be removed. Uh, there are a few larger trees in the back of the property that can remain, and the cluster of trees along the summit, uh, that will also remain. Um, uh, the rest of the property right now is, uh, grass and kind of overgrown areas, uh, which will, of course, all be cleaned up, and there'll be lawn areas. And then there will be some landscaping, and, uh, depending on the room left over, especially in the front of the property, uh, when the driveway's installed and the, uh, the trees, uh, remain or protected, uh, a street tree could be added. Um, but there will be some other landscaping surely, uh, around the, uh, the building.
And just for the board's reminder, you know, we're, in the case of variances being requested, you are empowered to require things like landscaping to be shown, perhaps as part of compliance, as a way to mitigate the impact of the variances.
And we're certainly amenable to that, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, this, this owner takes pride in what he does all around the Jersey, very much here, home base in Parsippany. So we're certain, you know, certainly amenable to reasonable improvement measures. We think it's, our interests are certainly aligned with the townships. We want it to look better, and we want it to look better and function better. So, um, certainly on the table for us.
You're speaking on behalf of both owners, then?
Yeah.
Any of the board members have questions, uh, for the planner? All right, I, I have a few myself, actually. Um, so, um, we, you know, the challenge with this area is a lot of it came into play before we even had any ordinances. A lot of it was developed before the plans went into place. So we do have a lot of the mixed properties that you're saying. Uh, how many 50-foot lots do we have in this, in this area?
Hmm, I didn't do an inventory of the number of 50-foot lots. I suppose we could, uh... I mean, I think the majority of lots conform, to be honest with you. I think there are... I counted five lots that are on that particular exhibit. There are five lots that are 4,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And there were a few that are, there were a few that are under 6,000 square feet.
Yeah, the, the 4,000-square-foot ones certainly stand out.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see, my, my next question, you, you testified about the density of, of the, uh, of these two lots together. But how does this change the density of the block?
It doesn't change the density of the block at all. What do you...
Well, you're adding, you, you spoke about the 7-point-something density per acre.
Right.
And it seems as if this is adding density.
No.
You testified that it doesn't.
Not at all.
Well, maybe to these two lots combined, but to the block, it certainly increases density.
I'll put it to you this way. The, the lot as it stands today is more than two times the requirement, okay? It's 13,100 square feet, where 6,000 is required. So even if you divide it in half, you would still have two lots that exceed 6,000 square feet. So my point was that, uh, when you look at both lots combined, whether they both be 6,000 or one is, you know, uh, 8,000 and one is 4,000, whatever. The point is, uh, any combination of lot areas is going to give you a development density of 7.26 dwelling units per acre over that, over the property in question. That, what's proposed here is less than the implied density, because it's 13,100 square feet instead of 12,000 square feet. So the density, density is less than what the ordinance permits when considering the entire lot area.
Okay.
That was my point.
All right. Now, the building coverage, as you testified, uh, we have a lot of non-conformance, but we're going from 1,720 square feet, it looks like, up to 3,000. going from 1,720 square feet, it looks like, up to 3,000 square feet between these two buildings. So we're certainly increasing the building coverage quite significantly.
Well, I mean, I don't think you're increasing the building coverage significantly on Lot 1. I think the testimony wasn't additional 58 square feet, but you're lessening the size of the lot. So in terms of the structure, when visually, when you drive out there, you're not going to notice a structure that's, has a much, much larger footprint. It's not. The footprint is minimally larger. You know, of course, on the newly developed lot, then, of course, you have the lot coverage consideration because it's a new structure. And I think anytime you have, you know, a 5,000 square foot lot, it's challenging. It's very challenging to meet that 20% requirement. And that's why I think you have so many nonconforming lots, because they're faced with exactly the same situation. You know, how do you, how do you fit, you know, a house of reasonable proportions, you know, livable area on such a modestly sized lot? It's a challenge.
Well, I think you're speaking exactly to my concern, is that maybe that, you said this is probably the best thing we can do with Lot 16. Why not leave it as it is? Why isn't that the best use of this lot?
Because if you leave it as there is, there's no project. And then you're going to be, then you're going to be left with that house on Lot 1, which in my mind is an unattractive, it's, how can I say this to be in a kind way? I'm not going to call it an eyesore, but it's obviously in need of substantial renovation, okay? And I think what's proposed here is a vast improvement over what exists. And that's, you know, that's what we try and do as planners, you know? We try to come up with, what's the solution? What's the solution for this lot that's more than two times the lot area requirement in the zone? What do we do with it? And the way that the property was re-subdivided, to me, makes perfect sense. And the manner in which it was done, where all the setbacks are observed, the height requi, I'm talking about the setback requirements on the newly created lot, the height requirement is observed, it really, a lot of thought went into it to try to integrate it with the surroundings, with the neighborhood. And I think it's very successful. So in that way, I think it's an improvement over what exists today.
Okay. Are there any other lots that exceed the 9,600 square feet that Lot 1 is today?
I'd have to go back to my, I think I did see one on the other side of Halsey.
Yeah, the other side.
You know, directly opposite the site, it looks like, this says existing dwelling, so this lot looks like it's vastly oversized. This building, I can't tell what it is, I don't, it doesn't look like a single-family dwelling to me.
It's some kind of multifamily.
Yeah, it's a multifamily. So, I mean, I would say there was probably just this one oversized lot that I saw. Lot 4.
It looks like maybe, but we can't tell because it's cut off the house on the corner of Pittman and Centerton.
Pittman and?
And Pittman has another lot farther down.
Oh, over here? Yeah. All right. I guess my question, is a 9,600 square foot out of character for that neighborhood? It seems like there are other properties that match up to that size.
No, it's not out of character. I mean, I don't think it's going to happen here in this particular situation. What I try to tell board members, you have to be careful, because there's always the possibility that these lots one day can be developed as one, and you're going to put a giant house there, okay? And that giant house on these combined lots will be out of character with the neighborhood.
You know, I'm sure some of the other board members would disagree with me, but it seems like those larger houses, especially on Halsey, are what's becoming in character. Maybe not so much on the side roads of Summit and Pittman, but Halsey certainly seems to have gotten its fill of hope already.
Yeah, I mean, that's what happens when you, you know, like I said, it's the dynamics of land planning. Neighborhoods change. We can't hold on to the possibility that we're going to have all these, you know, 1,100, 1,200 square foot homes. We just know at some point, they're going to be add, you know, add levels or knockdowns or, and your master plan recognizes that.
Sure, but even if these lots were combined in the future, you couldn't build a house that's much bigger than the one you're proposing for Lot 1, because you're already pressing on the setbacks.
I think I would rather see two homes on this piece of property than one. I think the possibility of one massive home exists for those two lots combined.
Okay. That ends my questions. Mr. Mandell?
Mr. Cannon, why not just divide the property so that you have two conforming lots?
Well, the problem with that is, then you're going to lose the existing home, and I don't think there's any planning.
You're keeping it anyway, aren't you?
The existing home, no.
You're going to keep a wall of whatever you're going to do.
Oh, no, the footprint remains the same. The footprint of the dwelling remains the same. It's going to add a level, and then the detached garage is going to be now attached to the home. But no, you're preserving most of the home. It's worth keeping. I mean, listen, the way I look at it is, you knock down a home, all that construction material can end up in a landfill somewhere, okay? I'd much, much rather see the building be preserved, if possible, rather than knocking it down and starting anew.
Okay. You said that the thing was an eyesore, it's terrible, and now you're saying you want to preserve it, so. No, no, no.
Preserve it and renovate it. Preserve it and renovate it. Yeah.
Okay. The other question, and I'm not sure who answers it, you're hitting a second level, but you did not say that you're going to add a drywell off of that.
That's, I think that's a good question for the engineer.
Yeah, we are actually reducing the amount of coverage.
Speaking of the microphone, please?
We're reducing the amount of impervious coverage on that lot, so the amount of water that will run off that lot will be less. Typically, in that situation, you wouldn't add a drywell, but drywell is to mitigate any increase in impervious cover. But the drywell is proposed for the second lot.
Any other questions from the board? All right. I guess at this time, any questions from the public? And seeing nobody from the public here, we'll move on to comments. I guess, is there anything else you'd like to close on?
Briefly, you know, we appreciate all the board's concerns. These are all questions we've asked ourselves when this was being designed. My mask is a little bit, I started fogging up. These are all questions we asked ourselves when this was being programmed and designed, again, by a tried and proven developer who knows what he's doing in Port Sipney. To say that nothing works on Lot 16 may be true today, but as it's proposed, the lot area is getting better, it's getting wider. To say nothing works here, it's tantamount to saying this has got to be open space. And that's not what's contemplated in the R4 zone on a lot. To say Lot 16's got to be dedicated to open space, something's going to be built there. The best opportunity is to take a portion of Lot 1. We talked about raising that, Mr. Mandell. We talked about raising the structure on Lot 1, but then the problem is, is you can't put a house that fits in the envelope on Lot 1 anyway. So, you know, it's sort of six of one. We still are going to deviate from the code. And when we thought about that, we said, well, rightsizing it, the lots, it's 900 square feet. I'm pretty good visually. I can't find 900 square feet in the field. We're talking about an invisible lot line. Right, 900 square feet is wholly imperceptible to the eyes. So we left it at 5,100 square feet with a right-sized building on 16 and a complete renovation on Lot 1. And not what we're talking about, those tax renovations, right, where you see one wall stay up because they're trying to play with the collector. That's not this. This is a rehab of the structure. The structure's saying that it's getting rehabilitated. So what we're proposing is getting better. In several respects on 16, it's rightsizing the structure, it's adding to your housing stock here. It's not out of character with the neighborhood. And it's giving Lot 16 an opportunity to have life, as opposed to whole dormancy and undevelopableness in perpetuity if we don't actually give it some more lot area here and give it a room to breathe with a house on there. So that's how we reached what we did here, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We understand the board's got concerns about massing. We've met all that. We meet all the setbacks, we meet the height, we're trying to put very nice-looking front elevations on these structures so they're sharp-looking in the neighborhood, on top of the added increase to housing stock that we already talked about, on a lot that is 900 square feet efficient from the area, where you have others just like it here. So we're not trying to pigeonhole something. You know, when we started our case, Mr. Chairman, I said, you sort of have to have, like, you know, there's sort of a gut feeling. Does it fit, does it not fit? Lot 16 is a lot. As it exists, it's really tough to do anything with it. It's impossible, in fact, to do anything with it. As proposed, we're giving it an opportunity, in our opinion. And we tried to mitigate the relief everywhere we went. You know, we've been in the pipeline for this case for nearly a year. Take the pandemic out of it, we were still eight months in drafting these plans, trying to reach this conclusion, doing our building studies, doing our analyses of the area, the inventories, and we came up with something that we think works, from a planning standpoint, from a design standpoint, and an engineering standpoint. Some of the problems are even going away, as proposed. The one setback in the accessory structure, the impervious coverage on Lot 1, so we don't need a drywell, the structure on Lot 1 is going to look sharper when it's all done, and we're adding a single-family residence in a zone where it's permitted. So while there are some deviations, there are not all that many, and there are several pros in this application, in our opinion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, we want to thank you for your time. It's nice seeing everyone in person. The Zoom format has gotten very boring, I can tell you that. It's nice to get out for a night, and we want to put it in your capable hands at this time, Mr. Chairman. And like I said and offered before, we are amenable to all reasonable conditions the board may have, that they think might mitigate any of the relief, landscaping improvements, all of that. We're going to do that anyway. But if it gives the board a sort of a warm and fuzzy to help understand and appreciate how we're going to make this tailored very well here for the property, we're certainly ears open to suggestions for renovations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, with that, I'll open it up for commentary, and if you want to add anything that you think would make your, or sway your opinion one way or the other, please feel free to offer that in your commentary. Mr. Fageri?
Yes, I applaud the intent here, and my concern, well, there's a few things. The first one is, as was pointed out by Mr. Mandell, beyond the, I think, the quality of the intent, is that when we are concerned about the height of these new structures compared to the old structures, there's no sway for the character of the neighborhood in that argument. But when there is concern about lot size, all of a sudden, all the improper lot sizes in the neighborhood now need to be counted. So the old goose and gander issue is raised for me, that we discount how your structures are going to be so much taller. I understand the law and the ordinance, we've had conversations about that. I just think that there's an inconsistency here in the argument, that we don't worry about the lot size, or we do worry about the lot size, and look, all the other ones kind of have some of the same problems. But those same lots that we're pointing out for that, all of a sudden, we do not take into account the vast difference in height. And so that sticks in my craw, frankly, that inconsistency. And I haven't really heard why, and my problem isn't so much with 1601 as it is with Lot 1, frankly. I may be the only person here with that point of view, but that's where I'm coming from. Because I just don't think Lot 1 needs to be as big as you guys are presenting it. Just, that's my opinion, and I just, I wish there was more room for us as a board to maneuver, but I just wanted to express that. Thank you.
Other comments from the board?
I agree with Bruce.
All right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Microphone?
No.
Ms. Hernandez?
Oh, gosh. Not enough to do that on. Well, I could talk loud.
It's about a quarter.
What?
It's about a quarter. It's the bottom of it.
Yeah, that's on.
Okay. No, I understand and agree with what Bruce is saying, and I do appreciate what they're trying to do here. And we're, and it's kind of new for me still here, the nonconforming lots in Lake Port Sipney and other parts of the town make it really difficult, because you can't have one big lot with a huge house or two smaller houses that take up a lot of impervious coverage. And I like where you were going with this. I just, pointing out all the ones that have a lot of impervious coverage is not a selling point for me. So this is a little tough. I'd like to see more landscaping, if you could, if you could do a little bit better with the bulking of the, on Lot 16, that would be great, because it is, it is a lot, but there's nothing on there now, and I understand that you can't, you have the right to develop it, but we'd like to, we're trying to move forward. What happened before doesn't make it right. We're trying to move forward and stick to what our new master plan says. So I understand where you read part of it, but you didn't read, like Mrs. Pavate said, the other side, where we want to try to build or develop in the future with keeping the rest of the neighborhoods and sizing in line. Okay, so this is, I just find it difficult, this application, but I understand what you need to do, and we don't have a lot of wiggle room.
All right.
So more landscaping, anything you could do to make the neighbors happy.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
Other comments from the board? Michael, Mr. Piero, councilman?
Okay. A little history. All of these nonconforming lots, the 40-by-40s, the 40-by-60s, 40-by-100s that are there, were formed before the township had a master plan. We established our first master plan in 1977, and we made the conforming lot 60-by-100 knowing that we produced a whole bunch of nonconforming lots. But our intent in doing that was to prevent subdivisions. I've never, I've been on the planning board for 24 years, and I've never subdivided a conforming lot into two nonconforming lots. I've always said no, because you would then be increasing the density in the most densely populated area of our township. And to me, that's a no-no. Now, you're coming close here with the one lot by moving that, the borderline, where you almost have two conforming lots. And I agree, two nice-looking homes is better than one rotting home on that property, so I'm reluctantly going to go along with this. But in general, comparing what you're doing with nonconforming lots that were there long before we had a master plan doesn't sell, doesn't sell me at all.
Yeah, Mr. Dinsmore?
I agree basically with Mr. DiPiero's comments. The things that make me favor this application at this time are the fact that the houses that they present here do not appear to be much more than 30 feet in height total to the absolute peak. When we talked about trying to make sure that we don't get that canyon effect in the areas that are densely packed, we tried to keep it to between 28 and 32 feet rather than 35 feet. So this is close. I spent 10 years of my life in Lake Hiawatha in a 50-by-100-foot lot, and I was quite comfortable there. I thought it was very reasonable. I appreciate trying to make things a little less densely populated, but everything I've been reading these days suggests that more dense population is coming, whether we want it or not, that that's the only way that we can properly meet the needs for housing for our future citizens. But that's another matter altogether. I think that the fact that you have two homes here makes a project more likely to be a good project, providing very nice homes and an update to the neighborhood from the house that is there now. And so for those reasons, I would vote in favor.
All right. Any other members of the board with comments? Mr. Mealy?
As I testified earlier, the water allocation issue is an issue with me. In the event that... In the event that Building 16 were to be built on, how do we resolve the fact that there's no water allocation for it at the present time?
Mr. Mealy, if I, if I can handle that one, I'd like to put that question out of your head, if I, if I may. Like I said earlier, if, if there's no water for the site, they'll be lacking a necessary approval to go ahead and get building permits. So, you know, that's really up to the water department, whether or not there's water for the site or not. I think there'll be more on this coming with this board. I do think the water issue possibly could become more important for this board, and, and my advice may, may change going forward depending on what we get from the water department. But as of now, I believe we have a memo, a more recent memo saying that there is a water allocation. And in the event there's not, then their approval's void.
You can't vote. And the outlook has told me, Mr. Mealy, he doesn't pay his lawyer, he doesn't get watered, so I won't vote.
All right.
So I give Mr. Closs.
All right. Well, I think I've made most of my comments already. I'm trying to look at how Block 322 lots align, especially in that corner area, because to me, it looked as if on Lot 323, 16 just doesn't look like it fits. It looks like from, from Lot 2 to Lot 1, you would have a seamless transition, but on 322, you have that same small lot on the corner there. So that doesn't work for me either, but that's, that's not part of this decision. You know, I, I would struggle to say that in the future Lot 16 could be used for anything. And for my part, I kind of like that. I appreciate the work that's been done to, to the work on Lot 1, and, and while some of our members are not in favor of those roof heights and the development there, I see that as part of the development that's already been occurring, and I don't see that as being out of character. What I do see as a problem is the increased density of Lot 16. And so that's where my biggest challenge is. All right. So.
Counsel, you heard from the board members that wish to offer their opinion. Do you want to proceed with a vote tonight?
We do, and I appreciate the board's thoughts, and I would just reiterate that we don't have a density variance an issue. We're increasing Lot 16. It is a lot. It is a lawfully existing lot, and I understand the point, Mr. Chairman, I consider with the board members, we have very good observations. We're meeting the code on height, we're meeting it on density. I understand that you would maybe like to see more green there, but that's just not what this code sets, it's a zone in 6,000-square-feet lot areas, and 16 and 1 are in different ownerships. You know, I think the wish of us all is improved development in the area, which is right-sized development on existing Lot 16. So with that, counsel, yes, we would like the board to consider a motion and vote in the season on the application as presented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, counsel.
All right. Well, I will entertain a motion on this application.
Mr. Chairman, because proposed Lot 1601 is smaller now than it will be when the applica, if the application is approved, and it's reasonable to expect that any existing lot can be developed. Within some reasonable, you know, confines, I move in Application 20:505, Alpha Investments LLC and Vega Assets Investments LLC, that we approve the minor subdivision with C variance. Were there any?
With the condition, as stated earlier by Ms. Favate concerning landscaping.
Yes.
Can we also get a condition, if the board supports it on windows, if they're able to add additional windows, subject to the building code?
Certainly.
And with that as well.
Okay. Do we have a second to approve the motion as presented by Mr. Dinsmore?
One second.
All right, Mr. DiPiero. All right, let's take a vote.
Councilman DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Fergieri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandel?
No.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Ms. Veely?
No.
Chairman Von Aken?
No.
I believe you have five votes, counsel. If I counted that correctly.
I'm still counting, I'm not counting.
Five and three.
You're very welcome. Thank you for the presentation.
How you doing?
Good. Busy. You guys?
Swapped.
I've done three deals with Jeff right now.
Do you really?
Yeah.
Well, that's much more interesting. I mean, we've had far too many unanimous votes.
I know. I have no problem with, with being on the losing side.
It's half.
All right. Board members, I think we need to close the meeting before we get comfortable. If comfortable is enough. All right. I'll accept a motion to close the meeting?
Don't move.
All right. All four? All right. Anyone against?
Don't move.
All right.
I'll take them, I'll get rid of them.
I don't think that's an obvious.
No.
And, you know what?